Good evening, I'm going to call to order our June 6, 2018 meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes. I'd like you to join me in a moment of silence in memory of Joe Grant, who passed away this past weekend as the wife of our Milton Fire Chief. Thank you. So I do not have any changes to tonight's agenda. I don't know if anyone else does. Good. And I'm told that we have somebody here for Citizen Speak. Wonderful. Please come up. So the microphones are mostly for at home, less so for here. Please introduce yourself and give your address. And as our policy indicates, we are here to politely listen, but we are prevented from engaging in dialogue during Citizen Speak. The floor is yours.
My name is Teresa Cook. I'm at 44 Windsor Road in Milton. I am the mother of a kindergartner, Eric Glover, and I have another daughter who will be joining her sister in September of 2019. And I'm here to speak to you about an issue near and dear to my heart. It's the impact of smartphone technology on our children. And as we know, we are only beginning to understand the impact of smartphones on our kids, but we do know that they're incredibly addictive, that what we're seeing now is that there are some unfortunate trends of having significant impact on anxiety and depression, cyberbullying. The list can go on, quite frankly. But it's something that I'm here representing a small group of parents who share my concerns. And we would like to talk to you a little bit about the conversations we've been having over the course of the last year with our peers. A few targeted conversations where we felt like many, if not most, actually shared our concern and alarm at the trends that we're seeing. But I would also admit that most of them feel a sense of helplessness, right? That the horses left the barn, so to speak. And if they were to delay giving their child a smartphone, then it would cause social isolation or exclusion in some capacity. And so that's where the Wait Till Eighth pledge comes into play. It was a movement started by a woman in Texas who felt like she wanted to combat this not only in her own home, but in the home of, or in the homes of others in her community, really knowing that there is power with numbers here. And it simply asked parents to wait to give their child a smartphone until the age of 13 or in eighth grade, at least. And this does not apply to flip phones. It doesn't apply to other technology in which people would feel as if they could connect with their children outside of the home or in a case of emergency. There are a lot of forums now in which people have watches or GPS technology that they can communicate otherwise. It is purely for the smartphone. Really what we're hoping to achieve here is if we could get a sense of awareness around the pledge, if we could get optimally people to sign the pledge, we could have achievement in a few areas. One, simply increase education and make people aware of some of the impacts that maybe they're not privy to. Make people, potentially give them pause before they make the purchase. And third, create a sense of community and solidarity if people do want to delay, knowing that they're not alone. And maybe we could become the rule rather than the exception. I think that we're at a point now where the trend is quite significant and it's the norm and it's understandable that that was the option given to so many people. But with the data that were given today, it's worth really considering something different. And I'm not here to demonize technology. I truly feel like there are benefits and there are people who make that choice for their children for many reasons. But I think that there is truly a case to be made that the more we're able to delay the access to essentially a computer in your child's pocket, it could really have an impact on what we're seeing as a broader public health crisis in some cases. So my ask is that not only from a public school standpoint, we have the partnership and support of the school system in promoting the Wait Till Eighth pledge, but also simply the education and awareness around the impact we can have here. I mean, Apple came out just this week with new technology in their new operating system where parents can manage not only their own usage, but the usage of their children and their phones, which is fantastic. And this is exactly what we're looking for. But I think also in the sense of some of the children that are at the younger ages right now, one of the better ways to manage it is to not give them access to it at all. And so that is it. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. I think that was it. Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Well, we're very, very excited tonight. We have special guests of the superintendent, the members of the Pierce Players Singing in the Rain are going to give us a little preview and tell us when the show will be produced, what time, how the viewing public can go. So welcome, the highlight of our season. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Why don't you tell us about the play and who you play and introduce yourselves and what grade you're in?
My name is Maxwell Mitchell. I'm in eighth grade and I play Don Lockwood, who's basically the main role.
I'm Mary Kate Mylod. I'm in eighth grade and I play Kathy Selden, who's Don's love interest.
I'm Gabriel Winkler. I am also in eighth grade and I play Cosma Brown, who is Don Lockwood's best friend.
And why don't you tell everyone who maybe hasn't seen the movie, the famous movie, but it might be a lot of people, what it's about?
So it's basically about the, you know, the transition from silent pictures into talking movies. And so Don Lockwood, he's an actor in silent pictures. And he has to learn how to become an actor in talking pictures, basically.
And so did I read, Dr. Spalding, 150 members of the Pierce Players this year?
Yeah, about so.
And 123 things are just the rest of the crew.
And for the viewing public who want to attend before you share a little bit with us, the show will be Thursday?
Tomorrow night at seven. Friday night at seven.
And Saturday at two.
Excellent. And tickets can be bought in the Pierce office?
Right in the, like...
Yeah.
Oh, your agent's going to tell us, Dr. Spalding, how we can, the viewing public can get tickets.
So we have very few tickets left already. We have probably about 50 for tomorrow night, only about 30 for Friday, and only about probably 70 or so for Saturday. You can, so you can no longer get tickets in the main office at the Pierce. You may come to the performance Thursday, so come before seven and we will sell you tickets for, obviously, Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday, based on last performances' numbers. We will definitely be sold out. I would even predict by the end of tomorrow night for all three shows. So I would, if you're interested in attending, I would highly encourage you, even if you're not going to attend Thursday, to swing by if you want to try to get tickets for Friday or Saturday, because it's, I am 100% confident it will sell out probably within the next 24 hours.
Is that exciting?
But before, and before you perform though, just again, because I'm the musical theater guru here on the school committee, can you tell the viewing public what kind of is funny about Singing in the Rain that I think, about your character, that you're the famous actor and it's the first talking film, right? And the big famous female star that is in it, what can't she do? Right. She can't sing. So what, so what do they have to do? What do they try to hide to the public is what?
Basically, what my character does is the voice for Lena Lamont when she's starring in the first talking picture. So basically, she's singing and like trying to do it, and then they'll cut out her voice and put mine in.
Right, right.
You'll see a scene in that in the play, too.
But they try to cover it up. That's what the big thing that's uncovered and it's funny. Yeah, yeah. That's great.
So do you have a little preview for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's stand up.
Stand up. Yeah. You can take the mics, yep.
We can share one.
You can share them. Okay.
So we're going to be singing "Good Morning."
Oh, I love this. Okay, good.
Good morning.
Good morning!
We've talked the whole night through.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
Good morning, good morning. It's great to stay out late. Good morning, good morning to you.
When the band began to play, the stars were shining bright.
Now the milkman's on his way. It's too light to say goodnight.
So good morning, good morning. Sunbeams will soon shine through. Good morning, good morning to you.
And you, and you, and you. Good morning, good morning. We got the whole night through. Good morning, good morning to you.
Nothing can be granted than the B in Louisiana.
In the morning, in the morning. It's great to stay out late. Good morning, good morning to you.
Might be just zippy if it was in Mississippi.
When we left the movie show, the future wasn't bright. But came the dawn, the show goes on, and I want to say goodnight.
So say good morning!
Good morning!
Rainbows are shining through.
Good morning!
Good morning!
Bonjour!
Monsieur!
Buenos dias!
Muchas frias!
Bonjourne!
Agitorne! Good morning, good morning. We've talked the whole night through. Good morning, good morning to you.
I'm looking forward to seeing it. It's going to be great.
Oh, you should hear Mrs. Sheehan. Congratulations.
The voices were good, weren't they good? They should be in a competition.
Next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Karen Spalding with Pierce Middle School. This is Pierce Middle School's night, new assistant principal. Will you join us? Kyle Elves. So we're very, very pleased to have you here tonight. We thought you had met a few school committee members. We wanted you to meet all of the school committee and the viewing public to connect the name with the face before they see you July 1st at the Pierce School. On behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I want to welcome you and tell you how pleased and proud you participate, you were an active participant in our retirement reception. And if you blink, five minutes later, new appointment. So welcome, Dr. Spalding. We'll give you, give the viewing public your resume and then perhaps the school committee has some questions for you. Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you for having us. And I might have made Mr. Elves a little bit nervous because I did tell him you were going to expect him to sing and dance as well. But that might have to be for another time.
If he sings, I'll tap dance for him and we can do a little duet.
So I am very excited to be here to introduce Mr. Elves to the community. I thought I would just share a little bit of the feedback and conversations that we had as we went through the interview process and what struck us in particular about Mr. Elves, who has experience as a teacher as well as an administrator. In particular is his strength in really connecting with children and connecting with families and really doing that important work, being really solid in instruction as well and being able to support teachers and making decisions that are always rooted in what's best for children. And that really came through in the interviews. It came through in our conversations with folks who have worked with him previously. And so we are really, really excited to have him here. Now, I also didn't share this with Mr. Elves, but he came to visit Pierce. He was at the Pierce on Monday. And I did ask Dr. Fitzgerald, our other assistant principal, how he did in the cafeteria. And he, how he did in the cafeteria was exactly how what I just described to you would predict. He rolled his sleeves up. He was saying hi to children. He was introducing himself. He was getting to know them and he was making connections immediately. And that says a lot to us because as we know, the most important thing we do at the middle school level is connect with kids. That's the most important thing. Because if you don't have those positive relationships, if you don't have those really strong connections, you just can't do the work. We are thrilled to welcome Mr. Elves to the Pierce Middle School and I will hand it over to him. That's okay.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. And I was telling children to throw away their trash as well.
Yes, it's very tidy as well, which is important.
That was a big hit with the lunch ladies. I expected questions. Do you have questions or...
Well, I was on, I have already met Mr. Elves. I was on one of the viewing committees and I just want to say that I was highly impressed with his attitude and philosophy about middle school years. As the kids that just came to perform and talk, I, you know, I do, I work in educational publishing, but I've been teaching dance my whole life and I've been teaching middle school these past couple of years. And they're great kids, but it's challenging, it's a challenging time in adolescence that kids are going through. And I just thought a lot of the perspective he gave and comments he gave were really encouraging and positive and just had a very good overall vibe from him that he really gets this grade level and I think will be really a good fit for our district. So that's just my initial comment as well. If anyone else has any other questions, I want to ask them or whatever.
Well, I just want to say welcome. The Pierce is a wonderful school. We're very, very fortunate to have an incredible middle school. It is some of the most challenging times for students and Mr. Jett, who's sitting behind you over there, used to be the principal over at the middle school and now we have Dr. Spalding and now you'll be joining the team. And it is a really wonderful middle school, well structured, terrific curriculum, unbelievable students, the things they achieve, the extracurricular they do, the program that's offered. And I think that you, you'll be really happy here and we're looking forward to getting to know you and welcoming you to the community.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just excited to be here because it's such a great vibe from the students, from the faculty, from Karen, Dr. Spalding and Dr. Fitzgerald. Got his name for a second. Learned all these names. It takes a lot of passion to work with children and I'm the type of person that wears everything on my sleeve. And I'm an advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves and I've been doing that for my whole career. And I think I just found a new home in Milton. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're excited to have you and welcome aboard.
Good luck July 1st, right? Cheer up for a couple of weeks.
What do you have them doing on July 1st?
I think it's summer. Welcome to middle school camp, right? Yeah, welcome to middle school.
Next on our agenda, a long time coming, a lot of discussion. I'd like to ask to join us at the table, Milton High School Principal James Jett and our guidance director Karen Cahill for their final presentation requesting school committee vote on the elimination of class rank. It's been some very valuable discussion and input from the Milton School Committee. So I'll turn it over to Principal Jett and Guidance Director Cahill.
So again, we welcome the opportunity to come before you to talk about our proposal to eliminate the class rank. Not much has necessarily changed in the presentation from last summer. However, I will highlight a few changes that we added since we started this almost about a year ago. There was some conversation about upper echelon of colleges and universities, whether it be Ivy League schools. We did reach out to some of the Ivy League schools, actually all eight of them, and we did have some responses, which you have. Those responses, actually, I took out the names simply because I didn't get permission to share their names, so. But you have exact quotes that were sent to us via email. I don't have a clicker up here, so I apologize. Oh, thank you. So if, if, there's a couple of other things that I want to highlight which we could go through. Since we last spoke, back on February 13th, we gave our second parent information presentation early in the morning. We did one back on December 6, 2017. It was done in the evening and we tried to do that to go out to the general public and give people opportunity to come forward and ask questions, make recommendations and so forth. And one of the concerns that came up was, well, if you eliminate the class rank, you're going to have a lot of students, a mass exodus leaving and going to private and parochial schools. So since this, since that time, we reached out to all of the private schools that you have in the presentation. If you could click a few slides ahead. Keep going, Janet. This slide, if you go back one slide, I'll start off with the public schools. This is just a sampling of public schools that do not issue class rank and haven't done so for several years. Some of the schools that are in our general area that we like to compare ourselves to in terms of how well our students do and probably have a similar makeup as we do here in the town of Milton, they haven't had the class rank in quite a bit. And it hasn't hurt their student body or particularly, in particular, their graduating seniors in terms of reaching for higher level schools. If you go to the next slide, this is what's different from the previous thing. And this is the only thing that's really different. And that was the private schools. I will start off by saying Belmont Hill, when we reached out to them, they said, "I just want to let you know, no, we don't. We haven't done it. Our students are more than just a number." Milton Academy, you know, why would you spend $50,000-plus a year to be ranked 100 in the class? Obviously, somebody would have to be 100 in the class if you have a class of 100 at least. Phillips Academy, arguably one of the best schools, not only private schools, but one of the best schools in the nation, they do not issue class rank. So none of these schools issue class rank. And without question, I understand that they have a great reputation, a lot of these schools. But I also think Milton High School has a great reputation. And that is something that we talked about that will be illustrated in our school profile. And the reason why I'm concerned about that, we offer 21 out of the 30-plus college boards APs at the high school and our students are striving to get to that level. Last year, we had 636 exams taken. This year, we have 724 AP exams that were taken and that was spread out over 350 students. So again, our students are constantly pushing ourselves. They're really trying to take the most rigorous course load that they can at the high school. And then we also talked about where our students fall. And I think the perception was, well, you don't want to punish kids or students for working hard. That is the exact opposite of what I'm trying to do or what we are trying to do or propose. If you have a four or 4.20 and you're ranked 40th or you're ranked 35th, that doesn't necessarily mean that you didn't work hard, as hard as the person with a 4.6 or 4.7. And I know some people are saying, "How did they get their GPA up higher than that?" That's because these AP courses are college-level courses and they're taking them and they're getting excellent grades and they're passing the exams and they're really pushing themselves. So in addition to our academics, Milton High School offers a lot of extracurricular activities that a lot of schools really don't. We have a robust world language and performing and fine arts program that our students are really thriving in. And so in addition to the academics, they're also juggling all of these extracurriculars, which I think is important. So the assumption is if you have a 4.20 and if you're in the top, if you're outside of the top 30, that's not a negative in my eyes. It shows that we're really stretching ourselves and we're becoming more of a well-rounded student body. And so our proposal to you was to say that we didn't want to hurt our students. And oftentimes, when you have schools that are becoming more and more selective, they're using filtering systems. And if you put class rank on there, they're going to use a filter system to some extent to get through the tens of thousands of applications. And if they don't, and we talked to multiple colleges, I think I shared, last time we were here, we had a college fair in the fall and we also had one in the spring. And once again, we asked the colleges whether or not they issue or they put a lot of weight on class rank. And I want to say, I would say 95% of them said that they don't. And then a few of them said, "If you, if you put it on there, we're going to take it in consideration." And then my final statement that I would make to you, there was some concerns about academic merit scholarships and how do you do it? As a young lady in admissions office for Quinnipiac said, "Well, you know what? If a student is ranked number 46 in their class, it's very difficult for me to justify that." However, if the class rank is not there and I'm looking at everything as a whole, it's less likely that I would have to justify it in that way. So I want to make sure that you as school committee members in central office, along with the viewing audience, know that we're not doing anything that we think that would be detrimental to our student body. But we want to make sure that people know it's an academic institution first and foremost and we value that.
So I'm going to, to Ms. White first, then I'll go to Dr. Craig.
So just to be clear, I voted to eliminate class rank during the first discussion. I continue to agree with your thought about this. Having just been to the graduation, which was terrific, and hearing both the valedictorian and I'm going to mess up this word, the salutatorian, speak, how might you, the faculty decide on student speakers if we don't use that criteria? Because I do think folks enjoy hearing the student participation. So I just wanted to know what your thoughts might be on that.
So I can always wait until you guys make a vote and tell you, but sometimes... In all seriousness, sometimes it's a class president, sometimes it's someone that's elected. There's so many different variations out there. Some schools have, both of my daughters graduated from Oliver Ames and Eastern and they have one or two speakers to speak. So it varies depending on the district, the high school and where you go. But it could be a valedictorian, it could be the salutatorian, it could be the class president or historian, just as you alluded to. So it could be any of those.
Dr. Craig.
So your response leads to my need to ask this question. I just want to confirm, I am... On board with this, but it depends on your answer to this question. No pressure, though. No pressure at all.
We're even.
This means that we will not be recognizing the valedictorian and the salutatorian, correct? It's, it's an all or nothing proposal?
Our proposal was to eliminate class rank altogether.
Altogether, okay.
I also, yes.
Great, thank you for that.
Never Craig. Or, ever.
So I really want to thank you a lot for all that you have engaged the community in this conversation. Because I can remember sitting here in the summer and you brought this up and I literally was like, "What? We're going to do this and we're not going to have the conversation as a community?" And I think it's been truly beneficial for myself as well because I learned a lot. And also, I learned from the students. The students at Health and Wellness brought it up a few times and how they liked the fact that nobody talks about it anymore. It hasn't been a part of the conversation with the juniors this year. And I think that's, that was the first step in the right direction. I think there was, there was a student who wrote to the Milton Times and who talked about it. So I really, I think that that was the thing that was very helpful for everyone to get a sense of why this was important. And I do think that having those discussions about, a lot of people think it's so important, the numbers, as you talked about at graduation, but the whole approach for the district about social-emotional learning, about health and wellness, really, really says that you shouldn't rank students. The only person you ever have to be better than is yourself. And that's really, and in college, they do the summa magna and cum laude sort of thing. And some universities have a valedictorian, like at USC, they have a valedictorian, but it's not, it's picked by the faculty. And it's a person that faculty vote. And that person, I don't know what the valedictorian stands for necessarily, but they give a speech at graduation. So I think that, I really commend you for all the hard work that you did. It really made a huge difference, I think, in the community and for me, for me personally.
I agree.
And I guess I would be remiss if I did not mention the piece about the social-emotional piece. And that was one of the things, not only was it in Milton Times, we had a student-led panel with Arielle Solomon, Dominic Jan Catarino, Ashley Thermador-Payne, and Ashin Chowery at the Milton Public Library a few weeks ago. And that was one of the things that they talked about. They talked about the stress level, the competition that students have. Here's the deal, if we were comparing ourselves to other students in other districts, I would be all for it because I think Milton High School would be top-notch. But it would be like us all walking home and if you have more than one children, it's like saying one is better than the other. We are all different. And you look at the holistic approach, but we're not comparing ourselves to other people. That was one of the statements that came up in terms of, well, you rank people in athletics. I don't rank them in athletics. The state does. I don't rank them in athletics. The conference does. I don't rank them in athletics, the conference does. That's because we're competing against other people. In this case, we're competing against ourselves. And that, and that's the piece that I wanted people to be aware of.
Thank you.
Do Member Rosemary and then Member Frella.
Well, I also want to thank you for your patience and your effort in bringing everybody along in the community on this issue. I think it's a great sign of the progress that we've made in education, both at the high school level and at the college level, that people are looking at kids at more than just a number, they're looking at all of their involvement and, and work that they did during high school. And I think any student should be proud to go to colleges with the Milton High School school profile of what our high school is offering and what they did in, in the context of our high school. And I think it, it just speaks volumes, and admissions officers know what we're doing here. And obviously, you've spoken to many of them, and, and I think it's just right in line with, with heading in the right direction and reducing that pressure on kids and helping people look at, at the whole package that, that the students bring, bring with them along. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Frella.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Member White said about the speeches of kids. I know that a lot of parents asked me about that, and I, again, I think that, you know, the class president speaks, and that, that makes sense, because they're elected by the student body, and to give someone who's been elected to lead them, speak is a good idea. And then with the other ones, if we, if we do know class rank, you know, my recommendation is, I think it would be great, you know, to just offer any senior to submit a speech and, and have a panel of, I don't, you know, your choice of teachers, or you, Mr. Jett, or whatever, English teachers of, maybe who really has this, you know, the best speech, the best message, a good thing, and have it voted on, and maybe that's, you know, to have the positive, good messages, I mean, I don't know, I think, I think that would be great and give, give it an open, just like you said, an open opportunity to let any, if you have one other speaker beside the president, I know now you have three, but, but that, I think that would be a nice opportunity to give that, yeah, anyone in the class who wants to submit a speech about a statement of, you know, where they're at as a student body, their generation, would be a good idea. And then voted on kind of like what Margaret said that they do at USC, that the, the staff who knows the kids and knows what, might be a good choice of who chooses it, but I think that would be a great idea. But, yeah. That's all I wanted to say.
So I will, I'll preface my comments by saying that I think you've done a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate the conversations that we've had on this topic, and you have made a very convincing argument when we first had this conversation about a year ago. My, one of my concerns was that, as you said, a lot of the elite universities use filtering mechanisms to, to go through their application process, and my concern was that being ranked in the top ten percent of your class, for those who were, is definitely a, a plus in the, in the column of an applicant. And I think during the course of our conversations, and I, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but this is exposition for those watching or reading later, that you have assured me that there, it is incredibly unlikely for an individual in the top ten percent of our class for that, that single factor to be the deciding factor that makes his or her application pulled out of the, of the large screening pool into the pool that is then reviewed in-depth and holistically by the elite universities. So I feel allayed that, that concern of mine is put to rest, and I'd like to thank you for doing your homework with, with some of those universities to, to make sure that that was the case. I, I will point out that one of the, one of the aspects to this that I find, one of the reasons that I find compelling to do this is that the college application process has become something of an arms race where, you know, there's, there's a lot of competition to sort of game the system or maximize the, the benefits of our students and children. And I think this, from that perspective, helps us do that in a sort of bizarre way by showcasing students who are exceptional, but where the class rank may be a hindrance to them. And I think by removing that from their transcript or application, it, it really helps them. And I think it also responds to the pressure that's being exerted by colleges and universities who are looking for more diverse, more inclusive student bodies and are, are sort of beseeching the schools for ways to make it easier for them to find those students. So I think we're, we're helping them help us in that, in that way. So I'd like to thank you for all of the hard work that you've put in, not only to, to coming up with this proposal, but for, for walking, I'm sure the, the six of us individually threw it in, for making sure that, that we're on board to varying degrees as well as the public.
When you're done, I just wanted to add one thing.
Okay.
Are you done?
No, not yet.
I just had my hand up like a placeholder. Okay. I just, it just occurred to me that with all of this ranking, that, that we should note that Milton High School is ranked highly in the state, and it's also highly ranked nationally. And that's something that colleges will look at, the profile of the school, and that's a testament to the work that you have done, Principal Jett, and your administration, staff, faculty. So kudos to you, that will serve the students well.
Oh, yes. So what Karen Cahill, Director of Guidance, is handing out is the Milton High School profile.
Always in the profile, right.
It gives, you know, average, mean scores for your SATs, it talks about our AP, it talks about our grading system, distribution of our weighted GPAs. All of that stuff will still be, this individual form that you see before you goes into every single senior's application project packet for every school that they apply to. So this gives them the additional information that you, that most people would need to look at in terms of making some of those decisions, in addition to the student's application itself, recommendations, personal essay, and test scores.
And I do apologize, the backside usually lists every single course that Milton High School has to offer. My apologies, I didn't include that.
In very small font, because it is quite the extensive list.
It's updated every year. I'm just kidding.
So my, my final comments are, on the topic of graduation, we've, we've said, you've said repeatedly over the past few weeks at the boosters dinner and at the academic night that we are primarily an academic institution. And I, the, the idea of having the two individuals who achieved the highest GPA recognized and given the privilege of addressing the graduating class resonates very strongly with me. And I, I think that that is a very important tradition and distinction to make. I, I agree wholeheartedly with the idea that you, you don't, for the social-emotional component, you don't necessarily want people competing for that and jockeying for that. And while there may be some anxiety with, you know, with addressing, you know, two-hundred-and-sixty-some-odd students and their, their gathered family and friends, I think it is important to identify our, our students who have, by an imperfect means, the GPA, but a, a means that we've used for a long time, excelled. And my suggestion, if you're looking for ways to augment or, or further balance the graduation ceremony, is to not only maintain those speakers, but if you're looking to sort of broaden the pool of speakers, to, as you said, elect a class historian to give a, a fourth speech in addition to the, the class president and the valedictorian and the salutatorian. I think that would add an added perspective, and I would be interested in listening to those speeches in years to come.
I, I'm still confused, though, I, I apologize, but I thought, to what Member Greg had said, that we wouldn't have first and second. Isn't that what first and second is?
Salutatorian is number one, correct?
Right. So it's either, it's like what she said, it's all or nothing. Because if we go into one and two, then what are we, what are we doing?
So here's why I made this statement, and I said it all depends on if you want me to answer that at the end.
Yeah.
First of all, we know we're coming forward with a very, we're asking you to do exactly what we ask our kids to do a hundred and eighty days out of the year, and that's take a educational risk and things like that, but a risk that is founded in evidence and things like that.
Right.
And to Dr. Donahue's statement, yes, I do believe that it's an academic institution, it will always be an academic institution. However, the boosters night, the, the senior awards, the performance in the fine arts, those are things that bolster up that academic, that make us more well-rounded piece. So a lot of schools don't have those things, and what I want to say to people, every single one of these private schools up here is an academic institution that don't issue class rank. And I'll tell you why, they, people pay a lot of money to go to these institutions, and not every single student in that graduating class is gonna do a speech, nor would they be the valedictorian or salutatorian. So I don't know where we go from here, we're just bringing the information for you, we would love your endorsement on that. I do agree in terms of having more of a eclectic point of view, so to speak, in terms of the speeches and things like that, and that's something that we're always willing to negotiate. And the, and the, the reality is, if kids wanted to figure out their GPA, they could do it. We're just not giving them the class rank. It's still in the program of studies, there's a formula, how do you do it? But we didn't do it this year, and there wasn't a lot of conversation about it. Because it wasn't there. And I think change is very difficult, sometimes because people are fearful of losing, losing something. And this thing, I, in this proposal, I honestly think that a lot of kids will be gaining. And it's not just based on my comments, it's based on the conversations that we had with administrators from other institutions, from guidance counselors to other institutions, and also from college admissions directors from your colleges and universities. So we present to you our proposal.
So I will, I'm sorry, Member Rosemary, did you want to read another comment?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused too, but I just want to be clear. If we decide to eliminate class rank, there will not be a salutatorian and valedictorian identified each year? Is that correct?
We made the proposal, I feel like a politician. We made a proposal to eliminate class rank. That's how we would like to do it. But we also know sometimes there's a give-and-take process. So our proposal moving forward is to eliminate class rank.
So that...
School committee sets the policy. That's, that's...
Well, I, I, but I, to Aida's point, but I'm confused by that.
You're not confused by us, you're confused...
Confused by yourself, right.
But, yeah, we made the proposal to eliminate the class rank. And, and the reason why we said that, when you, and I'll be, if you say the top ten percent, where's the cutoff? You say the top five, where's the cutoff? And I do want to just remind people, and again, we have students who are not in the top ten, who are going on to Ivy League schools for a ride. So I just want to make sure that people understand that, and part of that is because of the individual, because of their story, because of their accomplishments, their achievement, and because of their experience.
Member White.
All right. Well, I just want to say that I love the idea of the faculty asking students to submit a, you know, a thought or, or speech to be, you know, to be considered for graduation. And I'll tell you, I don't want to embarrass you, James, but the last two graduations that I attended last year and this year, your speech to the students was inspirational, very personal, and I found them very moving. So to me, I've been to so many commencements and listened to so many commencement speakers, and some of them are awful, and they're, you know, and they are, so, you know, there've been some of them that, I, I could, I remember my college graduation, the commencement speaker was atrocious, it was, oh, it was awful. But I mean, I love the idea that if you guys could see these speeches ahead of time and see ones that you thought would really touch the students, that was very personal, that might have had to do with an event that happened that brought them together, I think that, you know, that way to, had anyone who would like to participate have the option to submit and then do something that might really make sense for that particular class, rather than the valedictorian necessarily.
If I could just add one piece, just so people understand the workings behind the scene in terms of valedictorian and salutatorian. We don't understand that, and we don't know that until about five-thirty, six o'clock, about a half hour before senior awards night. I want people to fully understand that, because seniors take exams, and then we have to calculate all of that, and we have to make sure teachers record everything, and it's done, and it's, people stay here and do that, and then those individuals get a couple of days to put together a speech, where Diane Crowley is working with students on the Friday before graduation, Saturday, I'm on the phone with Mr. Kelly, I'm in here on the Saturday. It's, it is a, it is a track meet, so to speak, in that. And I'm not saying that's the reason why you do away with it, but to your point, if that's an option in terms of allowing, you know, the proposal for people to submit it, then people could do that a little bit early and have a little bit of an idea. But again, our proposal has been to eliminate, I mean, that's in the title, to eliminate class rank. So how people decide to vote, that, that's definitely on...
And, and at the risk of muddying waters that you just expertly clarified...
You did.
I, I asked you a couple weeks ago when we were putting together the agenda, I said, "So are we eliminating class rank, or are we eliminating the reporting of class rank?" And you said, "We're eliminating class rank." So we're eliminating class rank, that's what you said, and that's what we're doing. So I'm going to, I'm gonna move that we accept the proposal of the high school administration team and eliminate class rank.
Second.
Second, and then, I'll recognize, Member Frella, if we want to, can you continue to discuss this further?
Okay. Yeah, because I, I guess I'm confused when you say the reporting of it, I just want to clarify the reporting of it, and when, and then when Mr. Jett said, "You set the policy." You can eliminate class rank, but it's up to us to set the policy, so I don't understand that.
No, I, I thought you guys were voting on it.
We are.
That's what I mean.
We're done.
I, I made, we made the proposal, we gave you the information, we did the presentation, we brought it to our side council, diversity, the community, and now we're here for the rubber stamp or the denial.
Okay, okay, cool. All right.
All right, so moved in second. Have we confused and unconfused ourselves enough? The help?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what was the motion exactly?
Just to eliminate class rank.
To eliminate class rank.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the motion.
All right. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We have a student body, thank you very much.
Two years late for us, Mr. Jett.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda, and I promise this will be the last time, we'll put this out in the blast tomorrow, the school calendar, where your elementary schools went to the three sessions, we had to make one last change. So we'll date that and fully put that out through all the principals and my blast and on the website tomorrow. It was a change within one month of Conference Day with a Professional Development Day.
All right, so I'll move approval of the re-revised two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year calendar.
Second.
And next on our agenda...
All in favor?
Oh, excuse me.
All in favor? Do you want a second?
I got a second.
No, I, I was asking Member Everhart if she needed a, for a moment to review it.
No, so, no, I looked at it last night, no, I looked at it at home. I just, I had, this, this might be a question for another conversation, but I would like to have a conversation at some point about, because this had to do with, like, conferences, right? This whole change has to do with conferences. I would like to have a conversation in the future about the whole timing around the release of report cards as they are associated with vacation time, and the, the angst that that causes some families when they get released on a Friday prior to the long week of vacation, and there's no communication for families with regard to what got reported to them. I know that has nothing to do with this, but it prompted me to think last night, as I was thinking about that, that we're making this change because of that, and I know personally my own self, and in conversations with other people in the community, that that, it's an issue that I think we need to address. Okay?
All right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, so we're voting, all right?
All in favor? All right, great, that's unanimous.
The next information Jim and Donahue had asked, and this, I believe you can speak for yourself, but it was an excellent question. We internally understand the cycle of program review and purchases, but Dr. Donahue brought up, when we made the lodge language... But Dr. Donahue brought up, when we made the large language arts purchase, which was the first in Milton, and I think it's important for the community to know, historically, language arts and math at the elementary, it would be one grade at a time. If your child was in the second grade, and we started in the first grade impli, implementation. And so I have to recognize again, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and the group of educators in Milton, she put together. The model was exemplary. She brought in, uh, Dr. Noni Lassau with Ada Rosmarin, and Dr. Lass, uh, Noni is now the head of the Harvard Graduate School. Her assistant came in, they evaluated our program, our data, uh, they evaluated, I think there were nine programs that they evaluated. And, um, why this program, why this approach was outstanding is that now at the end of year two, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan brings what she calls the literacy team back in, they survey the teachers. And so the point that I'm making is, this was a, this was a large purchase. And so Dr. Donahue said, if you can, um, produce this document, we'll know in coming years. I know internally when we did math, I know when we're doing science. But now it was an excellent exercise for all the department heads to work under Michelle Cruiser and then Janet Sheehan. And again, this is a working document, to look at when individual curricula will be examined, when new curricula will be, uh, piloted, selected, and reviewed. So this is really, uh, sharing with you our internal document, um, but it shows that we have a plan. And, uh, we, it really was, uh, initiated by, we have to plan with our budget dollars. And we can't all of a sudden, um, as I say, wake up one morning and think that three different disciplines, we have the budget dollars, uh, to change, uh, the text. So, um, again, if you had any questions on this tonight, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan might want to address it, or, uh, in the coming days or weeks. Uh, but, uh, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan spent a tremendous amount of time, uh, with each of the department heads on this piece.
Thank, no, I was, I was going to say, thank you. I, I really wanted this because I feel as though, um, it, it's helpful for me to have sort of tucked away, so that when we're talking about initiatives, I can, I can pull it out and I can look at it, and I can remind myself where we are in the evaluation process for that, uh, subject matter and that gray level, um, and sort of, um, you know, sink into the conversation that way. I think it's helpful when we engage with community members and, and, you know, we, we're talking about curriculum, to know where we are and what's coming up and things like that. And not only for, as you said, planning and the budgeting process as well. And, uh, the strategic planning advisory committee, I think this will be helpful, um, you know, a resource for them as they look at the, some of the various things, uh, they go through. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to say this was a, an excellent request, like a excellent, like Dr. Donahue did request this. And I wanted to ask Superintendent Sheehan, like, did, upon his request, did it, I mean, for lack of a better word, like force you guys to take a more, did you already have all this in place? Or did it kind of, um, force you to take a more, um, in, intense, like step back to really evaluate, like, the monitoring, the select, the review, the implementation on, because it's pretty thorough, that it goes elementary through everything, all the way to social, emotional learning, which I think is fabulous.
Well, it did, it, while, while we always have ongoing, um, discussions and, um, and we, we plan ahead, and we develop the budget and so forth, we did, um, look at a process. So, um, Michelle Cruiser, our director of, um, K-12 math, um, came up with a format for us, which guided us through the process. And there were a couple of iterations, so we did really, um, dig a little deeper than we would have ordinarily. And, uh, we sat down, and it was a very thoughtful process. Uh, so, um, some of the, um, department heads or coordinators actually changed their thinking about it as we sat down and talked a little more, um, um, just a little more thoughtfully about, about the process. And, uh, one of the things that I would like to point out, um, though, is that when you see a year where there is, um, implementation, it doesn't necessarily mean a large purchase, although that process for thinking about two years of monitoring, and then a review, and should there be a pilot or a selection of a program, um, that, that is really going to guide, I think, everyone in the departments. But, um, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's been a significant purchase. So of course, following an override, these, these last two, you know, this past year and next year, there aren't any significant purchases, other than the, the science purchase for K-1 for our boss kits, which is, you know, one of the few things actually in, in, in this year's budget. And, uh, so that's reflected here. There are some, um, what we would consider more minor purchases, so a change in a whole class text, um, at the middle school or high school level, um, just to update the curriculum, might have been a $5,000 purchase for a, a set of, of books. But, um, no significant purchases, as you can see. So we're really, um, mostly in the monitoring phase right now, this year and next year, or a review phase. And where the, the notes were just, um, things that I thought might be good to highlight for discussion and to help, to help us, um, to help coordinators and department heads, um, to think about, um, you know, even some of the minor purchases, most recent minor purchases. So again, it is a living document, we'll, we'll continue to make some changes. The, um, social, and, um, social studies and history, um, it was noted especially at the middle and high school level that, um, it may be less than a five-year review, um, just because, again, they, they want to, um, maintain an updated curriculum. And it would just be aspects, it wouldn't be, you know, significant changes, but there may be some minor changes, that may not necessarily be of, of significant cost.
And just as a follow-up to mine, I, I would like to recommend, recommend that this is looked at every year and updated on the chain, you know, so you have the base.
Definitely.
And then report back to us every year, whether it's, and as Dr. Donahue has, maybe the end of the year or the beginning of the year. But, um, I think it's, it's everything he spoke to, it's right on that.
Now, we, we-
As a, as a, as a school committee, that we're in charge of the budget, and people ask us about that, and we can really always have this as a reference and a cheat sheet, for lack of a better word, of exactly where you're at. I, I think that every, every year, y, you know, you should meet with the directors and say, are, are, you know, are we on, are we on point to what we recommended and make the changes and let us see it? Because I think that that's, be very valuable, for you guys and for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Everyone recognizes that too, so, so, so thank you.
Yeah.
We'll do Member Rosemarin and then Member White, sorry.
Thank you for this, this is very exciting, uh, to actually see this. And after having worked on the strategic planning committee this past year, and the curriculum review cycle was one of our objectives of the plan, to actually see this, it's like, wow. It's, it's going. So this is just fabulous, and, and it really provides a roadmap, uh, for the district, and I think it's, it's very thorough, um, and comprehensive. Question for you, in terms of the key, um, at the top, I'm just wondering if you can explain what the difference is between review and monitoring?
So, um, in a curriculum review, um, a team would use a protocol for, um, determining whether or not a program should, should be changed. What is the currency, um, what is the currency of the curriculum? Um, it would, might be a review of multiple curricula. Again, some of the, um, some of the departments, of course, are moving to electronic resources. So it may not necessarily be a review of textbooks. But the review is a, um, would be a meaningful, um, process, um, to determine whether or not there should be replacements, additions of instructional materials, whereas monitoring would be more of an evaluation process. So when you implement a new program, you're, and you monitor it, you're going to monitor the effectiveness based on assessment tools, and you're going to monitor, um, the effectiveness of instructional practices and all of the, you know, those other pieces.
Excellent, great, thank you.
I had a similar question, but maybe I can ask another piece of it, is that, so you had a new, um, reading curriculum that you implemented last fall. So are you now, at the end of an academic year, are you, um, reviewing it right now? Are you monitoring it now? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
So our, um, our literacy leadership team will get together and perhaps we'll create a survey, or we will just, um, you know, evaluate it, because they've, they've served as, as teacher leaders in their buildings. And we've met periodically throughout the school year, but as a final meeting, um, we'll determine how we want to evaluate the work this year. That will include the professional development that they feel will be needed as we continue into the second year.
All right, terrific, thanks.
John, you got a question?
Um, so I just have a, so when I was first reading this, and I looked on the first page, and there was language arts slash curriculum, I mean, English, I didn't see anything about French. And so the French is under the world languages, right? So I brought this up the last time that you presented on Reach for Reading, and I just, I want to sort of understand how you are monitoring that and thinking about that, because it's not, it's not really, it's world language, I understand that, but it's the same thing as Reach for Reading. So it's, it's the comprehension, it's all of that stuff. And I know that you, we talked about, you're providing the same professional development to the French immersion teachers as you are to the English pathway or innovation pathway, or whatever we call it. But I just, I, because for me, I don't know, I know it's just a chart, but it, there is crossover there, and I feel like it needs to be thought about that way.
So under, um, element, under, um, language arts and English elementary, for K to 2, English Innovation Pathway, EIP, and then grades three to five, all students, perhaps all students, we could have included there, French, including French and-
No, I know that, but what about K, K to 2? Like, they're not, so they're just using the GAFI, and none of this stuff comes from Reach for Reading?
That's right, that's right, because it's immersion.
Right, I understand that, right.
Yeah.
Can I, I have two questions? So, I have two questions, so, um, so first, first to like, first is to Betty's point, and second is to, um, Member Everhart. So, I, when I was reading, when I looked at R for review, I, I interpreted that, um, that you would maybe be reviewing both, like, you, you, to your point, our, our program, you know, how does it stand up? How is it doing? And would we need to maybe use something else and review, and also be reviewing other programs? Kind of like the search that you did with Reach for Reading, like, would that be incorporated in it? Like, you'd be reviewing the, like, the current program, maybe if you've been using it for five, six years? Review, you know, revisiting it, reviewing it, and then also looking out, you know, um, in, in the broader publishing world about what else is out there, you know, for that math, for that social studies, for that reading. So is that also part of the process, like reviewing what's new and out, you know, like reviewing, is that? And then, and then to, um, I mean, I always wondered this too, to Member Everhart's thing. So you're doing Reach for Reading, I, I don't know how long, I mean, before, we had, um, Reader's Workshop, Reader's Workshop before that. We had that for about five years, right? And before that, we had, um-
Open Court.
Open Court for probably about 10 years, I would think.
At least.
That was pretty old, right? I mean, I, again, I'm in educational publishing, and I know that the average span is like seven to 10. I mean, give or take for a district to use something and then say, okay, now we gotta, we gotta research it. But something like GAFI, uh, this is what I wanted to ask, I know Hachette is the publisher of that. I know it's sort of like the standard, you know, elementary reading program for French. But, I mean, do we, have we ever, has there ever been a revision, an update? Or are we still using the same GAFI that we used when the program started 25, 28 years ago?
It's the same, I don't know if there have been updates in the, um-
Same book.
Yeah.
Wow, really?
That was ba, uh, my daughter's babysitters have come in and wrote to the book and said, this is the same one.
Well, I mean, ours too, but I thought maybe that might have been, so, so can I ask, like, there's never, I mean, I, again, I know Hachette's a French publisher, I know that that's the basis, but, again, I'm not, Hot Mifflin Hardcourt, I've worked there 20 years. I mean, we've had many read, basal core, I mean, GAFI is like your basal core French program that's used for French reading. So they haven't had any updates or any-
So I don't know the last revision of that book.
Yeah.
I, I can certainly get that information for you, but I would also-
And I'm Fisher, like, would ne, has never come and said, we'd like to update, like, the curriculum and get, like, for the K-5? I mean, the 1-5?
Well, she has updated the curriculum, because in, um, in 3 to 5, she's introduced zigzag, which is the grammar and vocabulary piece, so that's new.
Okay.
Fairly new, in the last few years. And, uh, she's also, um, when we were, um, implementing Reader's Workshop, the instructional practices are changing in the French immersion classroom.
Uh-huh.
So teachers participated in professional development, and there was a move to, um, to look at, you know, conferencing and leveled readers and so forth. And, um, given that, um, there, we've also invited the French immersion teachers to participate in the Reach for Reading, um, PD, um, even our first and second grade teachers, because we felt that they would benefit from the instructional practices that were, that were covered. And what Dr. Fisher is working towards is purchasing, um, books that are going to build content knowledge. So, so GAFI is fictional, and, uh, so they're looking to have that component, as we have in the Reach for Reading program, so that there's a purchase of, um, of, uh, of books and content areas, so that students are building their knowledge while also learning the language. So that is something that she is looking at.
That was my, that was exactly my question, which is, given the common core standards, they're supposed to be reading a wide array of things in fiction and nonfiction and with GAFI.
So they, they have increased the classroom libraries, but she's looking to, to, um, make some significant changes in that way.
Okay, that's good then, all right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Perfect, yeah.
Great, well, thank you. I, I think this, um, uh, this has been helpful already. Um, you know, because clearly that, um, the issues regarding reading instruction in the French immersion program are, um,
Yeah.
are, are, are issues that, that people have, have had. And it certainly sounds as though, with the introduction of the English-based language arts curriculum, that portions of that are being pulled into the, um, French immersion language arts, uh, component and utilized, so.
It's true, it's impacting assessment as well, which I probably should have mentioned.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and I'm really glad to hear that, that's great.
Excellent, all right.
Um, briefly, I know that you're not supposed to, you respond to Citizen Speak, but ironically, A.J. Melanson is implementing, uh, delay until eight. And he wanted to do it tomorrow in my blast, but I'm going to have him come to your school committee meeting, so I'll ring Ms. Cook, uh, tomorrow morning, and I didn't want to, uh, break any rules and tell her when she was at Citizen Speak, but, uh, I'm going to definitely put her on our parent committee. He is very, very excited, you'll be, you'll be thrilled, I'm not going to steal his thunder. Um, we had, as you all know, a very successful graduation, uh, week and weekend, and we wish, uh, all the best to our Milton High School seniors. Uh, they're gone. Um, today, very briefly, um, today, very briefly, um, I said to, told Dr. Donahue, Tucker had Korea Day, and so I went to the Tucker as your superintendent, and I said, how do you compete with the Milton Fire Department? In a fire truck and the Boston Police?
And the Boston Celtics, I mean, you made me, you, no, I'm just, I actually, you asked me to go. And so there's me and a former Boston Celtics, I, I just want to tell you how you feel, and the firefighter.
I knew how you felt, the Boston Police, and then I found a solitary gentleman, and I said, and what would your profession be? He said, I'm a sportscaster. I said, I give up. And so, um, but in our work, uh, we're talking about increasing, uh, the number of children and the interest in children to be teachers. And so I told, uh, my three sessions that I was a Milton Public School fifth grader, and they too can be the superintendent. And I said, you can be a teacher, and you can be a department head, a vice principal, and those students who told me they wanted to be pro football players, I said, you can be the football coach. And be a teacher, and all the avenues for teachers to excel and spread their wings. And so maybe we, uh, some teachers were born this morning, but it was difficult to, and then I'll tell you, there was one gentleman next to me in the computer lab, and I whispered, and what would you be doing? And he said, oh, I'm a software video creator. And I said, oh, oh, boy. And so-
Who was the Celtic person?
Excuse me?
Who was the Celtics player that came?
Oh, no, that was, when I said Sheila, last year, she competed against the Celtics. I only competed against fire and police.
I'll be honest with you, okay, he, he might have been third string and not really gotten on the floor all that much.
You didn't know him?
No, I mean, I didn't know him, I can't, I can't even remember, to be quite honest. But he, but he was there, and I think probably maybe the 90s or early 2000s.
But Sheila, um, was, represented the school district last year, and so she knows what it's like to go and, uh, compete against, uh, but I, I'm amazed they sign up, I think that might have been the third.
No, but they were excited to see you. No, but they were excited to see you, and it was me, they're like, you're not, they kept saying, you're not, you're not superintendent normally, every group that came around, I'd go, I know.
But I have the pencil stuff.
I have, I have, I have the gifts, right, right. But I, just to that point, though, I have to say, you know, I taught them about educate, I brought a lot of the books that we published, I made them think about, you know, all the books that they have in their classroom, and, you know, that you just don't go like I Dream of Jeannie and they appear, and I kind of explained a little bit about what we do and put the literature in and, and what, and how I negotiate the literature, and they, they sent some lovely thank you notes about, you know, what they liked to know was how much money you could make off of something that you publish. And I said, so I was like, so, you know, publish a book, and they kept on saying, what if I write a song? And they kept on, and I said, well, you make the money royalties off of that too, so little intellectual property stuff, that, that perked them up, that they could make money off of that, and, you know...
Jill, I don't think they know who I Dream of Jeannie is.
Well, I know, I didn't say that, but I mean, it was just like, you know, yeah.
Well, in closing, I learned something today, because for the first time in my career, I said to them, turn your piece of paper over and I'm going to give you my email address. So I said, I talked to parents and teachers, but I never gave students and said, you can email me if you need anything tomorrow, next year, or in the days and months and weeks to come. So they all put down my email address, and I said, now I'll have your names next to my computer and I'll look for what you need and you can call me. So that was new for me, I've never given my, and said to students, you can call me if you have a problem. Call me if you have a problem.
Uh-oh.
So that was...
I thought that was, said she needed something, what did she tell you she needed? And you said it wasn't immediate.
Oh, so one little girl quickly said, I know what I need now, so I said, what would that be? She said, do you know these rolling chairs that they all, I said, what do they call, Margaret?
Oh, yeah, alternate seating or whatever?
Alternate seating, she said, we'd like, we'd like the bouncing ball chairs for everyone. I said, not on the menu, not on the menu, that's a budget item. We'll see how we do. Very briefly, before this school committee meeting, the school committee, and I want to tell you, these individuals look forward, if they weren't there tonight, they had a previous commitment, and to be recognized by the school committee for their years of service was very moving tonight, so thank you. We have a school committee meeting next Wednesday night, before that, you'll be honoring volunteers. Last week, I sent you clips, your 226 PS middle schools went to the infamous Great East, I feel like they're going to the Great East, when I called up Karen Spalding, I said, is today the day the building's empty or partially empty? We sent you the clips, the chorus seventh and eighth gold rating, band seventh and eighth gold rating, chorus seventh and eighth platinum rating, and string seventh and eighth platinum rating, unbelievable. The other good news, this is a first for the Milton Public Schools, we go to the science fairs, and Kristy Chapetta, who you met, decided this year she was going to outthink the judges and really, just like, we talked about the class rank in AP, and teach them how at the statewide competitions, Baron Clancy and Anderson Corman, as a team, with their project developing better ventilation systems for refugee tents, and Bridget McCoy, a seventh grader, went with her project on the effects of temperature on yeast activity first place. This is a first time for PS, had a project receive first place, the best finish they've ever had for Baron and Anderson, and all three students were participants and they got their start in the sixth grade science fair. As we wind down, you heard tonight, the PS players, remember, here I am saying, go to the door, get a ticket, I think it's already sold out, if the truth be told, tomorrow night, Friday night, and Saturday afternoon, the 12th, our wonderful partners, the Milton Women's Club, you saw the scholarships that they gave Milton High School seniors, they raised that money from a lot of activities, with the Milton Road Race, and your reception as we come to this, your volunteer reception next Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, so now, we have our strategic plan presented for adoption, and I think the last time we discussed this, we were given the, the initial draft of it, we were given the opportunity to provide feedback to the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, and Member Rosemarin, our Chair of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, why don't you update us as to what has gone on between now and then?
Okay, thank you. So in your packets, you have three different documents. One is a summary of the feedback that we received through a survey that we conducted after our last meeting in May, where you reviewed this, and I'll go over that with you in a moment. A second piece is a two-page that has the goals and objectives for the strategic plan and the vision statement on the top, but this is, this document is the one upon which we will take a vote soon. And then the last piece, which is the thickest document, is the full strategic plan that has been updated since we last met, and it's a final version of that. So let me just give you a quick update on the feedback that we received. We did conduct an online survey and we received responses from 39 individuals, the roles of the respondents were broken, broken down to about two-thirds parents and guardians and one-third Milton Public Schools teachers and staff. And we asked questions on a one to five scale, to what degree do the goals in the plan reflect what the district's priorities should be? And as you can see from this summary, 77% were in the high range and gave it a four or five, 21% were in the middle range and 2% were low. We, we felt like that was a very positive feedback for, you know, as Principal Spalding mentioned the other day, typically, the people who respond to surveys, feedback surveys like this, tend to come in two camps, those who are very supportive and want to say so, and those who are really opposed to what you're doing and want to say so, but that we felt like this really gave us a good sense of, of positive feedback on the goals reflecting our priorities. And then the second scale that we asked people to rate was how realistic and manageable the goals are. And there, we didn't quite, come in quite as high, we had two-thirds that were in that high range, 21% middle, 12% low, and I think that is reflective of the fact that it's an ambitious plan. And it's, you know, it's realistic, and I think it's, it's, people are recognizing that this is, we're biting off a fair amount with this, but I think it's, it's, people saw that. We asked people what we missed, if there are any new initiatives that we should include. There were three sort of categories of responses to that, that, that people identified, but in low numbers, I think it was maybe two people in each of these categories that have 16.7%, so a couple people mentioned special education issues, a couple mentioned safety and security, and a couple mentioned the arts. And then more, I think there were probably four people in each of these other two groups indicated that they felt that we should address movement, exercise, and wellness more, or as a new goal, and facilities and enrollment and, and how that affects our facilities, and obviously, that's, that's still part of our, our plan going forward, that that will be fleshed out. So the Strategic Planning Committee, well, the last thing that we asked people was if, if anyone was interested in volunteering to assist with the strategic plan, and there were 18 people who identified themselves and they specified which goals they might be interested in working on. And it was really very rewarding to see that there were people from all six schools and to work on, interested in working on all of our goals. And so the Strategic Planning Committee just met yesterday to go over all of this, and we discussed, you know, how, what our next steps would be with this list of volunteers, and we're going to pass that on to the district leadership team, the principals and other leaders in the district, to follow up individually with each of those folks who identified an interest in volunteering and waved to try to find out how they could be engaged in this process. And again, the Strategic Planning Committee felt great about that kind of response and saw that as a really important message to our community, that we really want you to be involved in this process moving forward, and so we're taking that very seriously. The second page of the feedback summary is, I detailed for you some of the changes that had been made in the plan based on feedback that we received. The first four of these items were recommended by school committee members, either at our meeting or, or in writing before or after. The first was a question around how, how do we address, will we address cultural sensitivity in curriculum as mentioned in the curriculum goal? And if you look in the full plan under Goal One, Objective 1.5, I'm sorry, these pages aren't numbered, but, so, yes, so Objective 1.5, the objective is implement a curriculum plan and review cycle, just like we saw earlier, to ensure coherency of curriculum and vertical and horizontal alignment K to 12. And then we added in the language with a focus on cultural responsiveness and inclusiveness. So that has been added to that objective. And then we also added in, in the action step 1.5.2, where we're developing a program review protocol, that we would set guidelines for assessing cultural responsiveness, so that would be part of the review that Janet was just talking about before. So that was the first. The second was the question about that there is a proficiency objective for English language arts, looking at assessment and proficiency, achievement proficiency of ELA, but not for math and science, and perhaps that we might include this in somehow in the objectives. And since we just met yesterday, there really wasn't time to, to flesh this out, but we agreed that we would give this to the Curriculum and Instruction Task Force to develop an action step that would be 1.2.6. So 1.2 is the STEM objective, engage K-12 students in high-quality science, technology, engineering, and math experiences, and that we would add in a sixth activity there that would be something along the lines of developing a system of assessment within STEM curriculum, including benchmark framework across grade levels and curriculum, so, so that it would be basically aligned with the kinds of activity that we were talking about for ELA. And the fact that this is a living document gives us the freedom to continue to tweak this as we realize, well, you know, we really should include this and, and that this is just a case in point for that. The third is, was a question around our data use goal, that we, we need some internal assessment metrics or benchmarks that we can use to do our own achievement analysis. And the Strategic Planning Committee discussed this at length and decided that really what this, this sort of falls between two committees, the Curriculum and Instruction Task Force and the Data Use Task Force, and that it would give them a chance to examine the alignment of the internal assessments that we're using in the district with achievement data, so that the, the internal assessments that we use are not typically standardized and achievement-related outcomes, but what we want to be sure is that our internal assessments align with sort of our predictive of achievement. And so that we agreed to kind of task that, how to frame and plan for that, looking at that issue to those two task forces. The fourth was something that we discussed here at school committee, which was facilities, and we discussed including three different areas, space needs and enrollment growth, a maintenance plan, and future trends in education regarding facilities. And this will be passed on to the facilities subcommittee, who will further develop this goal and plan, and hopefully bring that back to the school committee in, in short order. The next was in the area of social emotional learning, and this was in regard to Objective 5.3, and it was, let me just find the... Okay, yeah, yeah, the, the original objective was assess, address, and enhance the behavioral health needs of students, and our SEL facilitator asked that we eliminate the word needs in that objective, and so that now this objective revised has referring to the behavioral health of students. And it's, I think it's a more comprehensive view of behavioral health than just looking at needs. And then finally, the, the cultural competency goal, there, there was feedback from Citizens for Diverse Milton, and this, this objective had been, well, this actually is an activity, 4.1.1, was, was actually in the plan that, that you received in May, but I, but it continues to be a concern for, for CDM, and they, they really want to be sure that, that we work towards the goal of ensuring that our, the Milton Public School staff reflects the demographic composition of the school population. And our action step in 4.1.1, which was in there back in May, is, is planning to do just that, examining research and trends to develop a robust process to reach high but attainable goals to increase the diversity of Milton Public Schools staff. So, you know, I just, I just wanted to highlight that one for you because it, it, it is a continued concern of CDM, but one of the great things that came out of a conversation with CDM, along with all of the folks who indicated an interest in being involved in the strategic planning for the different task forces that are working on the different goals moving forward, that Citizens for Diverse Milton would like to have representative to participate in the cultural competency task force, which I think makes perfect sense. And I, I was in touch with them this, this week about, about that and, you know, emphasized, and there were, there were other people also who had volunteered to participate on that particular goal, but also emphasized, you know, how great it would be if we could have somebody who has children who are in the schools now. who are in the schools now to represent that, that perspective. So I just think it's, it's a positive trend that we're, we're moving forward with this. And there are people who are enthusiastic about it and want to participate, and I think that that's all good. So that's all I have to say. And I would just, as I, as I said before, the goals and objectives are the only thing that, that we would be asking for a vote on tonight, but I'll open it up to any questions or comments it might have.
So I'll, I'll start by saying, once again, the amount of work that the Strategic Planning Subcommittee has done in a short span of time amazes me. The fact that not only were you able to process that feedback, move it through your advisory committee, and revise the, the plan and some of the recommendations in, you know, 30 hours is phenomenal. And I, I mentioned to Member Rosemarin that the chart that she sent out color-coded with people's interests, that, that made me happy. That was particularly impressive. It appealed to my sense of order, so thank you again. This is phenomenal. This is absolutely phenomenal. If anyone has specific questions or comments or...
Thanks. I just, it is, you know, beyond phenomenal, and I attended a meeting, I don't know, two meetings ago, and when it was just first firming, firming up, and it was great. And I could tell how much the volunteers from the community, I mean, kudos to Member Rosemarin about how, how much progress they feel has been made this year, and I could just sense their energy and positivity, and that's all because of your leadership, and I commend you for that. I had a question, though, on the survey. When did the survey go out?
It went out right after our last meeting in May.
Yeah. And did it go out to the entire district?
Yeah. Yeah, to all staff and all parents and guardians.
So, and did it go out through Member Superintendent Gormley's email blast and the principals and stuff?
Uh, I don't remember how it went out. It went out a number of different ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Came to us.
Because as a parent, I'm going to be honest, I didn't get it. I didn't see it. I don't know.
Senioritis.
Well, I know it's senioritis, and I know it's end of the year.
Overwhelming is what I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, I just, I feel like that's why there's like the low, I don't know, again, in the end of the year thing, but...
It's a, yeah, it's a challenging time of year. Everyone, everyone is busy, and so I think the fact that we got the response that we did...
Even 39. Yeah, I guess, I wish it was higher, but...
Yeah, I would have loved for it to have been higher, too, and maybe if we'd done it at a different time. And moving forward, you know, maybe we can think about how to do that in a...
Because I guess, I guess, I mean, like, what I love about this being, I know we have to vote on it, but I like the fact that it's, it's completed and that we can use it, you know, as a reference and a platform for what our, our overall school committee or district-wide goals are. But I would, I would love to be able to, you know, you know me, I all think, you know, you have September until Thanksgiving, and then you start to lose them as far as parents go, because they just get overwhelmed.
Right.
And if we could redo this again, maybe my recommendation...
The only reason that we did it, the only reason we had this conversation on strategic planning is because we needed to, because, so it goes back to our retreat conversations from last year, how we, there was a lack of understanding on the school committee about what was happening in strategic planning. The goal was to get the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee to work throughout the year to present something to the school committee for a vote before the year was over, so we could work with it at the retreat.
Okay.
So we discussed at the, at our last meeting that, we had a big debate about this in strategic planning, that it was too late in the year, we shouldn't do it, and I said, no, we have to, because if we don't say we did it, and particularly if we don't say to the teachers and staff that we did it, then that's just, that's not good. But then we will, in September, go back out with it again. So that was really what, the only reason that we did it was because that was the conversation that we had, and it was really important for us to, to bring it to the school committee so that the, the school committee could use it for further retreat.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and there, there was discussion about how, how will this interplay with our retreat and our goal setting? And we have a lot of information here and a lot of things to guide us in that regard, and it'll be, it'll be up to us to figure out how to, how to do that. Steve Paxia, who is a co-chair of the Strategic Planning Committee with me, and he's been on it more, longer than any of us, I think, did offer to come to our retreat for that portion of our retreat to assist in any way in our goal setting. And I just wanted to put that out there as, you know, I told him that I would make that suggestion to you all, and if you're interested, we obviously have to pick a date and all first, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Member Burrell.
So, so to his point, and he made a really good point that made me really think hard about that, he talked about that this is a lot of like micro sort of stuff, this is very, like a very detailed thing, but he said as a school committee, whether we think about the bigger, the bigger issues that we're facing that could blow up the, to sort of make harder to achieve the things we want. So in instance, facilities and all the costs that might be associated with that, and other budget issues that we might be facing that might make it more difficult to achieve some of the, the goals in the strategic plan. So I thought, I hadn't really thought about that, but I thought that was a really good point, actually, that he made, that there are some bigger issues we need to think about in order to be able to really implement some of these initiatives.
And societal issues, you know, trends in education, and, and, you know, he, he really does take, you know, a view that's quite a few steps back from this level of detail, and I think it's a valuable way to...
I mean, not to go too far down that path, but an example is our, our budget requests and our, our requests for additional FTEs this past year was focused solely on addressing enrollment, whereas we did not have the opportunity to address, you know, other educational aspects. And that, as you said, that, that constrains what we want to do, so.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, so I'm going to move approval of the strategic plan.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Stepping on you tonight.
Not at all.
It's really not personal.
I'm pausing too long, it's my fault. So I'm going to move approval, and we have a second. Wonderful. I'll thank you again. This is, you know, you say it so quickly, to go through the process in a year and have it ready for School Committee, it, it does not begin to describe the amount of work that went into making what was, at this time last year, sort of a big amorphous idea into this concrete document. It's, it's amazing, quite frankly. So thank you again to the, to the advisory committee.
We're voting.
Yeah, we're voting. Yes, all in favor?
I'd put your name on the table.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Thank you.
Why would we be so happy?
So, thank you to those of you who have given me your advisory and Subcommittee requests for the upcoming year. My goal is to have a revised list out to you, hopefully by the end of this week, so it can be in the packet for the meeting next week, so that if there are any changes people would like to make, we can have a final, or reasonably final array of assignments at our next meeting, so that when we go into the summer months, people in their various advisories committees can be productive over the summer months. But that's my goal, so. Summer retreat. So in front of you, you have the month of, the months of July and August. I don't think it's necessarily productive for us to all go through our schedules now, but in these two months, we will need to schedule at least three regular Subcommittee meetings, three regular School Committee meetings, possibly four regular School Committee meetings, as well as our retreat. So, and as you can see here, the end of August is already being filled in. So take them home, look at your personal schedules, and my goal is at our next, at our meeting next week to have at least three regular Committee meetings scheduled and our, hopefully our retreat scheduled as well. Yes, Member Burrell.
Would you like us, for the, for never, the regular School Committees aside, would you like us, for the retreat days, to email you either like our restricted dates or our available dates, so that you can maybe look at everyone's and then come up with, instead of a sit and go, and I can do this, and then maybe three or four recommended recommendations?
I think, I think that would be helpful. Most, most people have some vacation time planned during the summer, so if you, if you send me your blackout dates, I'll amalgamate them and send out a schedule that has all six of our blackout dates blacked out, and we can choose from the remaining times.
So when do you want our blackout dates by Friday? How about Friday?
How about Friday?
There we go.
Is that, if that's too soon for people, we can push it later, but I think most people have their...
Okay.
So that's for the retreat.
For the retreat, yeah.
Blackout dates for the retreat. So, can I have a question?
So you say three meetings in the summer, is, in addition to this 15th that you have scheduled here in August?
No. We typically have two business meetings a month, so our two regular July meetings, our two regular August meetings, but one of those, we might, because it's the summer and we don't tend to have a lot of business, and we have Independence Day and our vacations, one of those, we may not end up, you know, having a regular business meeting, we may not end up having two meetings a month over the summer. But the fourth meeting would, would be our, our retreat. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes, Member Burrell.
So, just right here and now, though, I would recommend, because you already have the 15th, I, if, unless people...
I won't be here.
After that meeting. Some of us, yeah, I mean, it might be...
I'll be at the C.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, there's the difference between our routine business meetings and the retreat, which we should all be at the retreat.
Yeah, so if you did, I would say that if we, if that's there, whether we all can make it or not, and I mean, I don't know if people might be away the first, too, but the first and the 15th, and then, I know everything else plays in, but then shoot for July if we can to have the retreat. I know it's really still tight in our schedules, but if we can, I don't know, we'll see. I just think the earlier the better, but, you know, I hear you.
So, all right?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we really meet twice a month in the summer?
No.
So we, we tend to not, tend to not, tends to be usually one meeting a month, but it's nice to have the dates available, especially if the Wilson Kendall in school will need approval.
We don't, I, I, sorry, we have, in my recent, only two years, feels like longer than two years. I don't, we didn't meet that often in the summertime.
Not once, each month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the retreat, like once each month, plus the retreat.
Right.
Yep.
Retreat's really important, I think.
The retreat is hugely important.
Yes.
So, so you want the blackout dates for the retreat by Friday, but then how are we going to get to the other dates then?
So I would, I would schedule them, our, along our usual pattern, first, third Wednesdays, holidays accepted. And if we don't need a meeting, if we move through all of our July business in, in one meeting, then, then that's, that's great, or same with, same with August. But, but, again, as I say that, our first and third is our typical pattern, but if four of us are going to be out of town the first week of August, then we'd have to, you know, schedule, obviously, for not that week, so.
Okay.
So, Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, Finance, me. Okay. So at our last Finance meeting, we, no, that, we've met twice since I reported a Finance, about our Finance meetings, Subcommittee meetings. And in those meetings, we have done several things. One was discussing the position of the new Community Services, Community Schools Director, and I think the cold in here has not only frozen my feet, but my brain. I'm very, very cold. So we discussed the position of the new Community Schools Director, and as you all, I know or aware, because you read it in the Superintendent's email blast, we have hired Martha Sandoval, who actually has come in, I just spoke to Pam Dorsey, who's just, was at the retirement party, because she's retiring, and she said that she came in for a day and worked with her, and that she'll be able to do that again before Pam officially leaves. So Pam's very excited about her and says that she thinks she's a good fit, and so all that's great. Another thing that we discussed and that we were made aware of was that there is going to be a school-based Medicaid program expansion for mass health. Mass health, this school-based Medicaid program will include payment for services that are provided to students pursuant to an individual healthcare plan, an individualized family service plan, a Section 504 plan, or services that are otherwise medically necessary. So this is in addition to those that are provided for IEPs that just continue. So that's, that's good news. What that means in a nutshell is more money will be coming into our system. Yay. It's also, it also came to our attention that there was some misinterpretation of the job duties of one of our very dedicated and hard-working employees in central office, and we, we asked to look at the job description for that particular position. And we found that, first of all, the job description is two single, single-spaced pages of duties, and I, for one, don't know how one individual does all of this. But in any case, we talked about it in Finance, and we decided that the best thing to do for this, to clear up any misapprehension, misinterpretation of what this individual does, is to change the job title to reflect what the actual duties of this position are. And so now the new job title, instead of Human Resource Specialist and Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resources, that's changed to Administrative Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resources and Human Resource Specialist. So that involved a lot of discussion, and I think is a move in the right direction for showing exactly what that individual does. Supposedly, on my report tonight, we were going to approve vendor warrant, but that was not included, the motion was not included in our packets, I don't know the figure, and so we will have to do that next week when we meet. And that's the end of my report.
Perfect. Thank you. And do we, as a, do we as a committee need to vote on that change in job title, or has that been handled, that's been handled administratively?
That's been handled administratively.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you again for all your hard work, the Finance Subcommittee. There is no break.
Well, well, we're not going to meet next Monday, so there are nice mini-breaks for all of us.
Health and Wellness.
Great. Well, so we had a wonderful Health and Wellness meeting last Friday. It was our last meeting of the year. We will not meet in June, as June is a very busy month for everyone who sits on this very large committee. So I will report out that last week, I went, I went with Jackie Morgan, she invited Sheila and I to go with her to a conference on food, it's called, I think it was called the May Institute, and all these food service directors were there, and they were learning about all these very fascinating things. And they asked Jackie to come and present on Health and Wellness, our Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, because it's so well-developed. So they had like four districts present, someone that's like just starting out, someone that's, you know, sort of progressed, someone that's in the middle, and then there was Milton. And it was really wonderful. She and I presented the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, the work that we do in the district about, around health and wellness, the work that all the principals are doing around social emotional learning with Superintendent, she and Superintendent Gormley, and then we presented on Noel Vigue's work around physical fitness and, you know, brain building and all that stuff, and we had, there was... fitness and, you know, brain building and all that stuff, and we had, there was a lot of questions, and give and take, and it was really, it was wonderful. It was really, really nice to go, and I sat through the, like, keynote speaker, and I learned a lot about branding and advertising to kids and, and thinking about healthy nutrition, and of course, um, Jackie's sister was there, Judy, since she is also in the business, and so it was just like a little mini Milton and McGinn. Um, we, we had a long conversation about Health and Wellness on, um, again, the issues surrounding the need for, um, a youth center, um, and the challenges that students face making healthy, wise decisions, particularly at this time of year. And, um, Mr. Jett, um, encouraged and reminded us that we were going to put together some type of video to show, um, parents as, as students, as they come into the high school regarding making good choices, and, um, I think Lori Stillman knew that we already had some type of little vignette videos, and, and there've been some discussions of how that's going to roll out at the end of August, beginning of September. Um, and Lori presented us, you know, with the survey that they did, what they found out most from young, from, you know, young teens and young adults is that, um, they would like a place to be able to gather where they do not have to be invited. And that struck an accord with all of us, in the sense that we, we talk a lot about opening our homes to kids and, and inviting them in, but that still requires an invitation. And the idea that there would be someplace for them to gather where they don't need to be invited, that really, just really was like, sort of, wow. Right, that was just really startling. Um, and then Noel Vigu presented, um, at the end about all the different initiatives he's made in the Health and Physical Education this year, and his upcoming goals, and there was a conversation at the end of the meeting about, um, a smoothie bike, or making smoothies on a bike, and how, um, that was a goal of our illustrious, who's your, is your Jackie Morgan, and it's, I guess it's a bike you make and you pedal in it, make smoothies, I don't know, but she was thinking that.
Oh, through the motion of you pedaling, you make a smoothie.
Yeah.
So there's a reward.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
You could measure heart monitoring, and it was really...
Yeah, it's like a, like, you exercise and create your treat at the same time at the end of the day.
And then we did get an update from the Health Department, from Caroline Kinsella, about tics, and, um, to be aware of tics, and the up, the uptick in tics, and different kinds of tics, and different types of illnesses that are, um, now being, um, discovered through different types of tics. I'm sure Dr. John, you could probably relate more to us about that. So that was interesting, and there is some information on the Health, on Health Department website about it.
Did she also, I know that, um, that, um, I was going to say Margaret Everhart.
Margaret Gibbons.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Health Director, did she say that she was thinking of, for the end of the year, putting out a notice to parents about that, be- because it's about, you know, what to look for, the signs of it, because it's so much more prevalent, and you, and how parents just don't pay attention, it's disregarded, and then boom, all of a sudden, this line.
And she, yeah, and she discussed about how there are different panels that you can ask your doctor for, um, a full panel for different types of illnesses, and how, um, if you spend a lot of time outside, and you, and your children spend a lot of time outside, to, to look for them, and also to ask your doctor about them.
Yeah.
And, um, I would like to say that, as I've said many times before, um, it's a really wonderful committee, full of just about every representation you can think about in the district, um, with a lot of conversation, and, and even when now I shorten the agenda, um, we never really get past one or two things. Um, but it really is a wonderful committee, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve on it, with Sheila.
Dr. Craig, ahead.
Um, I have a question and a comment. First, the question, at the conference that you went to with Jackie Morgan, did they have great, great refreshments?
So they did very have healthy refreshments.
Oh, they had healthy ones.
They did, and, um, there were no smoothies, but there are always smoothies at Health and Wellness.
And I would just like to tell the, the viewing public that you did that entire report with no notes. That was just amazing, that you, you had that kind of recall. I, on the other hand, had copious notes.
It's very sad. I have to tell you this, it's a sad, sad thing. That's why I don't sleep at night. My brain is just full of stuff. Dr. Don, you want?
Excellent, oh, Member White, please.
So I just want to make a comment, um, related to Health and Wellness, that, um, I think Lori Stillman might be watching tonight, I wanted to let her know, that, um, in my capacity as a school social worker, I was calling the Interface Referral Service, that Milton had recently joined, Denham also has joined that, and I was making referral, and after I finished that business, I put on my other hat and told them that I was, uh, resident of Milton, and on the School Committee, and that we were all excited that we were part of that, and she said that they're getting lots of phone calls of Milton families looking for resource information, referral information, and I thought, I just wanted to let people know that it's a great referral source, and people are using it, so that's good news.
Great, wonderful.
I just, one question, um, on, for the seminar, um, so from the, the takeaway when you said that they had someone, like, a district that's just starting, you know, been doing it a bit, and I was, so, but did you, even from the other presentations, do you think there's anything that, um, we're not addressing that we should, or maybe we focus too much on something or other, or anything like that, yeah?
So what I came away from that, um, that, those presentations, is that, um, well, so many of those other districts don't have active School Committee, Committee members on the Health and Wellness.
Really?
Yep, and their Superintendent doesn't know anything about it, and, um, they're not involved. And so I, Jackie and I, we both expressed the gratitude that we feel to work...
I think you're being modest.
With all of these people.
I heard that, uh, the response was, uh, your work because of the School Committee's leadership, uh, is exemplary, and others would model your Wellness Committee.
Yeah, they were asking tons of questions.
Really?
Yeah, they were, and Jackie's, you know, she's so funny, and they, the thing we also talked about was her food policy, you know, our, that policy, we have about no snacks in the classrooms, and everyone was asking her about that, and how does she enforce that, and, and, um...
Be an iron fist.
And it's, you know, it's, there was a very, I can't remember what district she was a part of, but there was a, a young teacher, a health educator, who was involved with her Health and Wellness Committee, and how she had got it up and moving, and now got more people involved. But the amount of involvement in our district, across the board, with all those different people that sit in Health and Wellness, is really quite, quite impressive, and no one else there, um, had anything like it.
That broad a reach of, of the town.
And the, and the partnerships with the hospital, with the town, with the police, with other community members, it was really, wow. Yeah, I just felt like lucky to be there, because it didn't have anything to do with me, like, it was mostly Kristen, you know, Baddeley Jones, that got the whole thing rolling with Jackie, and I just happened to be there to go along for the ride, so I was lucky. But it was, it was quite impressive.
And we were lucky of you, and you've led it, and everybody has a voice. So if, if you're a teacher and you have, it's ver- it's very, I mean, the agenda goes from A to Z.
No, it, it has a, um, a wide, quite the broad charge in our, um, in our Advisory and Subcommittee list there, and, um, again, Kristen Baddeley Jones has, was instrumental on, in getting it up and running, and getting sort of the momentum behind the ball there, uh, getting it rolling in the right direction, and, um, that's one of, just one of the things that we'll be grateful, uh, to her for, for, for a long, long time. All right, well, it's the, um, it's the Member Everhart's policy.
I promise it won't be this one next year. Okay, so, um, in each packet you have Policy EFD, Meal Charge Policy. This is a new requirement, uh, came down, uh, this past year, and we always had meal charge, meal charge information in all of the handbooks, okay? Uh, and now we have a meal charge policy that will be the same in each handbook across the district. Um, and essentially not much changed, uh, the first part just has to do with USDA requirements. Was really interesting, um, I was meeting with one of the principals, because they've been very gracious to meet with me and Janet about the handbooks, and trying to, like, make sure all of our policies are updated in the handbooks. And while we were seeing there, our principal was relating to us that a parent had contacted her specifically about this issue, because it says here that if you have a negative balance, you may always be, you may always be able to get a meal and milk, but you cannot purchase à la carte items such as snacks, you know, treats, until you're, until you pay your balance and you have a positive balance. And that was one of the things that the parent was kind of upset about, that student wanted a snack and not a meal, but according to the policy, if you have a negative balance, you have to, you get the meal. So it was just kind of interesting, sort of thing of how important this policy is for parents to understand. And, um, it talks about the different payment options, that you can prepay, um, online, set up an account, and that will just keep prepaying, and will never have to have a negative balance, um, do it online, automatic, and then we added this section here about refunds, um, we just changed the wording a bit, that says if a student is withdrawing and are graduating seniors, you can write and request that you get refunded the money, or you can donate the money to another student's account, you're, like, a sibling's account, or you could just donate it to the district to be used, um, for a student who might need it. Um, and, yeah, that was really about it. The other thing is that it is a requirement that this policy be commuted to all staff and families at the beginning of each school year, and to families transferring to the district during the school year. So that's why it's going to be part of the, um, handbooks, and then you'll sign up, you don't got to worry. So, we're just having a first reading tonight, if you have any questions, um, you can ask a, Superintendent Gormley did bring it to the principals, to the leadership team, if they had any questions, and of course Jackie, um, was the one who, Jackie Morgan was the one who wrote.
Dr. Craig.
Um, I would just like to say, I think it's great that this will be in the handbook, um, because, uh, months ago, I brought this up at, um, School Committee, that, um, there was a discussion on Milton neighbors that had some misinformation about what happens when students don't have the money for lunch, and I think that it's great that this policy will be included, and everybody will have the correct information, so thank you.
Sheila and Ada and I love policy.
All right, Traffic and Transportation.
Um, we had a meeting, um, last May, our monthly meeting, um, in May, um, and what came that, um, did I, I'm trying to remember, I have the minutes here, but, um, I reported, I reported last month, though, on the Townwide Traffic Commission.
You did, yes.
All right, I just want to double-check on it before I move forward. So, for this one, we, with regards to, um, with regards to Tucker, um, we, the funding for the, the bright yellow signs with slowed-down schools, uh, the school zones, you know, um, had, were approved, um, and we were, we had to follow up, uh, with Representative Driscoll, uh, because those go on Route one, one thirty-eight, and, um, that is controlled by Mass Dot. Um, just for the viewing public to know that transportation issues with Tucker, with Tucker can sometimes be a bit challenging, because a certain section's by the town, a certain section is DCR, and a certain section is Mass Dot, and when it's DCR and Mass Dot, they're the ones that have to move forward with it. So, um, so I, so we both, uh, emailed, um, Representative Driscoll, and then I spoke with his aide, and he said that he was going to follow up with Mass Dot, because it's really about Mass Dot putting in, not, you know, not our DPW or any of our town, they have to handle it. So, um, I asked him to get back to me before this month, uh, which I think is Ju-, it's the June eighteenth, that Monday before the last week of school, uh, which is our last, um, meeting, uh, of the year, just, just to say when, with a date, um, when that will be put in place. And I also, again, we have, we have two liaisons, um, for Mass Dot that come and, that sit in our meeting, um, and they've also relayed our information to the proper, to the proper point people at Mass Dot, but, uh, Representative Driscoll's office also, I think, has a, a faster beeline, uh, to getting the information and getting it moving. So he said that he'd have to report back to me, um, by that eight, by the eighteenth. Um, for Tucker, though, we're still waiting to, um, have the, the bus area painted at Tucker, which, um, Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck said he'd look into, and, um, we also are still waiting on the one-way on Oak Street signage, and the Oak Street, I believe, is our responsibility for the town, because it's Oak Street. So, um, that was also just being, um, worked on by, um, the DPW lead, and also, um, Dr. McNeil-Jamai is also speaking to the Tucker, um, residents who live around there, where it would be a little bit more cumbersome for them that they'd have to, because it's one way to get home, go up and around, kind of like drop off at Pierce. So they're working on both of that to try to smooth everything over, so that it, it could be placed and it not be as problematic. Uh, Walk to School Month, Walk to School Day, uh, National Spring Walk to School Day, uh, was last month, the first month in May, was also very, um, successful at all four schools reported, of getting a very, very large turnout. Um, we don't have specific numbers, but again, it was, it was, uh, when I was driving to work that day, I admit, I, I, here I am, Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, but when I pulled up out of my street to go out onto Pleasant, I just couldn't get over the amount of bikes and walkers that I, kind of, I said, what's going on? And I said, oh, sure, it's National School Day. Um, but it was really, I, I think I called Mary from my car phone to say, it made me feel good, uh, heading in to see such a great turnout, and Lee Toma, who was the Director of our Bicycle Advisory Committee, reported that he had seen fifteen, fifty-four bikes at Pierce that day, sixteen at the high school, ninety-seven bikes at Glover, um, eleven at Cunningham, and six at Colacott, like, when he counted up the bike racks that day.
Wow, it's great.
Yeah, so on that, which is really good. Um, our Glover Traffic Survey, um, our two reps, um, Moss Hart and Yana Linhart, um, spoke about the fact that the survey, um, that they worked on with Principal McDavitt, you know, um, that's gone out to parents, that they want to, again, it's a busy time of years, we talked about surveys, so they are keeping the survey out until the morning of our meeting, and pull together the numbers that they got on responsive feedback, and we'll bring back, um, the initial data at our June meeting, you know, the feedback that the parents, um, you know, hopefully give them on the issues and concerns, um, with regards to that situation. So for our next meeting, we'll get the Glover, we'll get the Glover results, we'll update on the, the painting, um, and then, oh, a final thing is that when we were at town me, um, not town meeting, the Townwide Traffic Commission meeting, which I really couldn't go to, because I was getting sworn in for this term, but, um, but there was a representative, um, from Milton Academy there, and, um, they are having their own traffic study done, um, for some issues that they're having around Milton Academy, and the, I think the Headmaster was there, along with the consultant that they hired, and when they heard about our Glover concerns, um, they reached out to, um, Superintendent Gormley, and I believe that, um, to say that they'd like to, to, you know, um, basically through our pilot program, you know, um, if we wanted, we could, we could have the consultant free of charge to assess the Glover issues, too, and make another recommenda-, a formal recommendation. So, um, I believe they've, they've met once, do you want to speak? Yeah, with, they've met once with Principal McDavitt and Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck, uh, with some recommendations, but I hope to have, um, a broader report on that in the June meeting as well. So, that's where things are at with transportation. Betty and Elaine did, did anything else out?
No, no, that's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, um, that, that, a lot of, a lot of issues. That's the understatement. All right, uh, approval of minutes, so we're going to do these separately, because I think, uh, there are different membership compositions on those two days. Uh, so I'm going to move approval of our minutes for April twenty-five, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
All right.
Um, I just have a correction.
Yes, please.
So I wasn't here for the beginning of that meeting, so I didn't, I wasn't present for the reorganization of the School Committee.
And, um, you arrived, uh...
I arrived at the second part of the meeting, um, where you had, where we were just doing the Pierce thing.
And you, so you arrived at, uh, I guess, Middle Elementary Problem Solvers?
Yeah, so I, I arrived at, right, the, the problem solving, right. So I didn't, I wasn't here for the reorganization meeting, part of the meeting.
So you arrived after Superintendent A, before Superintendent B?
Uh-huh, yep.
All right, so we're going to add, uh, Member Everhart arrives there, and are going to strike from Committee Present, in the first paragraph, Member, uh, Margaret Everhart. All right, so those, we'll accept those as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Otherwise it was not.
So I will move approval as amended.
Second.
Any other additions or subtractions or edits? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, so I will move approval of the minutes of May sixteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Thank you. Any further additions? All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Member Rosemary.
Well, I just had a question of, wasn't there a meeting in between these two, and what do we...
Uh, yes, in early May, I think we may have approved that, uh, those meeting minutes, but I will double-check.
Last time.
I believe we approved those all right.
On May six- On May 16?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, let's see, it should be under the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. April 4th and May 2nd. Very good. Thank you.
Right here, right? The little minutes at the end, right?
So all in favor of the May 16 minutes? opposed? Upstain? All right, so it's 501, Rosemary. Thank you very much. Old business. Citizen Speak topic response, not tonight, but, well, sort of. Next meeting agenda items. So as I mentioned at our last meeting, I'm going to, I'm exploring the idea of adding a hearing at the beginning of our meetings. So I think I'm going to start that at our next meeting. So we'll add a hearing on our space issues at seven, at our usual meeting time, with our scheduled meeting to follow thereafter. So community members who are interested in engaging in a formal back-and-forth discussion, but actually engaging in a dialogue as opposed to Citizen Speak, where we are spoken to, are encouraged to come to that meeting. My plan is to offer individuals who come up to three minutes to make a opening remarks, offer members up to seven minutes to engage them in back-and-forth, and then move on to the next individual. We'll see how that goes. I'm tentatively scheduling forty minutes, fifty minutes, that's five people. If we have more, we'll see how that goes. And if we don't, then we'll move into our business meeting quicker. And depending on the success of that, we'll, we'll take things from there. But I, if we go down to one meeting a month over the summer months, we'll hold them at that single meeting of the month. And if we do two, then we'll probably do the second meeting of the month. So, Member Rella.
I just wanted to speak to the communication format for that, because on Monday, when we had the, when we had the meeting, just the, the finance update and enrollment update meeting that we had on Monday, many of the parents that were there, you know, really didn't know about school committee meetings, per se, when they were, and what Citizen Speak was, et cetera, et cetera. So I didn't know how that was going to be, and they did ask about, we told them about your forum, forums that you plan to have, and how that would be communicated. So again, because it's the end of the year, I'm just wondering, besides the email blast, that it's, that what you just described is like outlined to them, so they really understand the flow of it, and that it goes in the blast, and then it can go out from each principal, because I think if it goes individually with each principal, they say, and in your email blast, and maybe another district-wide one, then people can't say they didn't know about it. And we actually had a healthier turnout than I expected on Monday night, at this time of year. So I, we definitely got the vibe that, you know, people want to do that. So, and then if you also do it in the fall, my recommendation would be to, which I think just for busy parents in general, is to set the dates that will be, like the what-school committee dates it will be at, put out that list, maybe it's something we can talk about at retreat, put out that list in the fall. And again, it, you know, inundate them so that they definitely are aware of them, because that was just a big, you know, feedback.
Just to follow up on that, one of the interesting things, and I don't know that we can plan it this way, but some of the parents felt like getting here for seven o'clock, given their work schedules and family commitments was hard. And we talked a little bit about that you can also Citizen Speak at the end of the meeting. So on meetings, when you sort of look at our agenda and think that it might not be a lengthy meeting, and we have an idea that we could be finished at eight-thirty, maybe we could invite some parents who might be on a, participate at the end of the meeting for people, so their availability won't become an issue. I don't know if that is workable, but maybe if you plan ahead, that might be something that we could, we could think about.
Those are excellent ideas. Those are excellent ideas. So, so we'll pilot this next week, we'll start at seven. And as you said, our, our meeting schedule over the summer, like everybody's summer schedule, tends to get a little disjointed. But I think in the fall, we'll be back in sort of the regular pattern of it, and if we can establish then up front, and maybe instead of having them at, we'll talk about it, at seven, at eight, we can adjourn a business meeting, go to the hearing, and then come back to the business meeting. Those are excellent ideas.
Yeah.
Thanks for remembering that.
So I'm going to remind anybody who's watching or listening, or reads this follow-up in print, that the, so the subject of the hearings is going to be our enrollment and space issues. So it's not sort of just a general forum. We are, of course, here for Citizen Speak, so if you have general comments that you'd like to make, we welcome those. We do have a policy that governs what is in and out of order at those meetings. So, you know, specific comments directed at specific individuals are not in order. General comments regarding our general policy setting and budgetary process are, that policy is posted on our website, and as well as being here in hard copy. So if individuals are coming, looking to speak at Citizen Speak, they're encouraged to read that, so that they are, A, not only prepared for the fact that it is not a dialogue at Citizen Speak, but B, their comments are in order and appropriate. So that said, there's nobody here for Citizen Speak at the end of our meeting, so we will move into executive session for...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, one more thing about the next meeting, I didn't have a gentleman. I wanted to ask about, about this Wilson-Kendall curriculum slash school slash...
We'll have an update at the next meeting.
So we will have an update, okay.
Well, I'll ask.
Yeah. I just didn't know, besides the curriculum, I know that we were given the curriculum book. I guess I just wanted an update that I know that it's for us to look through, that, but the curriculum coordinators, who are just the key specialists, like, will they have an update of having vetted it, and then could give us recommendations, right? Okay, super. Thank you.
Just one other thing, sorry. At the meeting the other night, someone asked us about how we come to these ideas about enrollment. And so we told them that the NESDEC presentation is on the website. It's under School Committee Presentations, November 2017. We looked it up during the meeting, and it's right there. So if they are interested in how those numbers come to be, came to be, they can go there, and it's the lengthy presentation with all the different slides and graphics and colors.
And so that's the, that's the NESDEC presentation, November 2nd?
It was this past, 2017 it was. They came back, remember? They came back. I know that there was one prior to that, but that was the one that I saw most recently on the website.
So are you, can I just, I'm sorry, can you, are you just saying that when we do the, the, as I call it, the shout-out or the FYI about it, that we should include that?
No, I don't know. People ask, they ask.
Or just make a link to it, or give a link to it?
The guy asked me about that.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to include the link, or to at least tell people where to find it, so that instead of coming with lots of questions, that that can answer.
They can, I agree, they can look at that. Yeah, some of, a lot of it, exactly. I agree. Yeah, okay.
Good, excellent. So we're going to move into executive session, the purpose of which is negotiate strategy for union and non-union personnel, and the approval of minutes not to return to open session. This is a will-call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Member Rella?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
So we are turning into executive session, not turning into open session. Thank you very much.